Welcome. This is the March 18th meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I'd like to start the meeting by saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's decision will be published in the Record Journal on Friday, March 22nd, 2019. The effective date or variance will be March, Friday, March 22nd, 2019. The date a certified copy is recorded on the land records. The statutory 15-day appeal period will expire on Sunday, April 7th, 2019. If you commence operation and/or construction during the appeal period, you do so at your own risk. Voting tonight will be Mr. Carmody, Mr. Wolfher, Mr. Parisi, Ms. Tata, and Mr. Szewinski will be voting for me. I will be running the meeting, but he will be doing the voting. First application is Application 19-003, variance request from St. Pierre for a side yard of 9.1 feet to an addition attached garage with second story at 55 Bayberry Drive. Is anybody here for that application? Please come forward, have a seat. Madam Secretary, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have staff notes first. Applicants seek side yard setback of 9.1 feet where 23.5 feet exists and 15 feet is required to construct an addition consisting of an attached 36-foot by 14-foot garage with second-story living space at 55 Bayberry Drive in an R15 district. This office would suggest identifying the hardship with this request. Consideration should be given to compliant alternatives and/or reduction to a nine-foot side yard request for an expanse of 36 feet horizontally and vertically two stories. And we also have a memo from the Fire Department dated March 15th, 2019. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Good evening. Please state your name and address for the record.
Jeremy St. Pierre.
Could you please pull the microphone close to you so we can hear you? Thank you.
Jeremy St. Pierre, 55 Bayberry Drive, Wallingford, Connecticut.
Okay, could you explain your application?
I want to do a second garage on my house with a master bedroom on top. And I think the only spot I could do it is on the right because the back has a sewer line running through it. And on the left side, there's already short space between the two houses. So I can see it only going on that side for the space that I want to do.
Okay, and the proposed garage, as you have it here, is 14 feet wide. I see in the drawings you have a... Is it going to be an oversized garage door for that side?
Well, I have a truck.
Okay.
Right now, in the garage that we have, only my wife's car fits in. The roof is too low for anything else to fit in, so... The door is smaller, so it's going to be a bigger door, yes.
Okay. And you've looked into other alternatives, and you said because of the sewer easement, there's no possible way of doing it in the back?
Correct.
Okay. Does anybody got any questions? Nobody's got anything? Mr. Szewinski.
So the size of the garage, I'm assuming it's for two cars?
It's going to be for one car.
One car.
And then the back of the garage will be used for our storage space.
Okay. And could the same thing be accomplished by reducing the footprint of the garage at all?
No.
No.
From what my truck measures out to be, it'd have to be enough for me to walk around it.
Thank you.
Anything, anybody else got anything? Mrs. Tata.
Thank you. Is the sewer line something that you could move? It would just...
That's a city sewer line.
Okay, so that's not anything that you are...
No, I believe all the other houses on the road connect right to that as well.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody here speak in favor of this application? Yes, sir. Please state your name and address for the...
Paul Proto, 51 Bayberry Drive. Just a point of clarification, that sewer line is the gravitational sewer line for all of Bayberry Drive and Bonnie Court. So it runs right through my backyard as well. So I'm the adjacent property owner, and I am fully in support of this application. There is no other place that they could put this addition. And there's more than just a house addition going on, so it's well-deserved.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else speak in favor of this application? Anybody speak against the application? Do you have anything further you'd like to add?
No, just thank you for your time.
Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing and open it up for discussion and possible action by the board.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we approve Application number 19-003 for a side lot of 9.1 feet where 15 feet is required.
Second.
Motion to approve, Mr. Carmody?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfher?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes, to approve.
Ms. Tata?
Yes.
Mr. Szewinski?
Yes. Your application's approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next applications, 19-004 and 19-005. Special exception request from OTEGA for the KLA schools to increase daycare enrollment capacity from 85 to 185 at 3 Technology Drive. And a variance request from OTEGA for KLA schools for front landscaping of plus or minus 35.4 feet to expand the building at 3 Technology Drive. Madam Secretary, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, we have staff notes for Application 19-004. Applicants seek special exception to increase enrollment from 85 children to 185 children at existing child daycare center at 3 Technology Drive in an IX district. See also variance request number 19-005, companion application, which details the proposed building addition and site modifications associated with increased enrollment. And then for 19... We're doing them both together, correct?
Yes.
Yes. So for 19-005, staff notes read, applicants seeks variance for front yard landscaping of plus or minus 37.4 feet where plus or minus 74.5 feet exists and 60 feet is required to construct a building addition and associated site and parking modifications to accommodate an increased enrollment capacity at 3 Technology Drive in an IX district. Increase in enrollment as well as increase in staff with proposed building addition necessitates recalculating parking requirements and modifying the site plan to construct such facilities. Parcel is plus or minus 4.33 acres in area with plus or minus 22% wetlands, limiting the building envelope. Applicant will proceed with site plan modification, pending decision from the ZBA regarding the landscaping. Regulations state that in an IX district, there must be landscaping in the front equal to the front yard setback, 60 feet in the IX zone. Proposal is to reduce the front yard landscape area to increase the parking area. By designing a parking area with one-way circulation and angled parking spaces, the applicant was able to reduce the variance request approximately two more feet than initially proposed. And we have a revised survey dated 3/11/19 from Giuliano Associates. And we also have correspondence from the Fire Department dated March 15th, 2019, and correspondence from the Health Department dated March 13th, 2019. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Christopher Giuliano, licensed land surveyor and professional engineer with the firm Giuliano Associates. I maintain an office at 405 Main Street in the Yalesville section of town. Basically, staff comments outlined the requests that we're making on the variance. Basically, in order to expand, we need to increase the size of our parking lot. And based upon the lot configuration with the existing wetlands and in prior design and built detention area, the only way to expand is towards Technology Drive. So we are asking for the front yard landscaping reduction so that we can put in the necessary parking. Early on, I met with staff. We kind of talked about the plan, and the suggestion was to come back with a one-way loop circulation and angled parking, which I did make the change. And you do have that revised plan in your packet. And the latest plan, I did color up so you could see where the wetlands were, where the buffer was, and where the detention area was. So it gives you a good feel for why we have to go closer to Technology Drive and really don't have any other options. So with that in mind, if there's any questions on the variance aspect, I'll be happy to answer those. And if not, I can address any questions regarding the increase in the number of children, which then brings us to the special exception.
On the variance side, you... How many parking spaces total are we going for here?
I believe the number is 52.
52.
I can double-check on the plan to give you the exact number, but it's right around 50, 52 spaces that we do need based upon the number of teachers, which is going to be increasing from 20 to 28, and then the students from 85 to 185.
And you're going to have a setup, loading and unloading zone, of course, for the kids?
Yep. Basically, that was one of the comments that town staff mentioned, to have a designated area for the unloading and unloading. And that's why we changed from the initial plan. In this latest plan, we actually have parallel parking up against the sidewalk closest to the building. And those spaces will be our unloading and loading so people can get in and out as quickly as possible.
Okay, so the parking in front of the building's going to be parallel?
Correct.
And then you angled all the rest, I see here.
And then the parking, depending upon how you're looking at it, the way it sits on the plan, basically to the right of the driveway or left as you're coming in, I imagine that will be where most of the staff parks as well. So that way, if there is a little bit of a delay in dropping off kids, people can... Other parents can pull into the angled parking, get their kids in and get their kids out. But definitely, the parallel parking along the building is going to be designated as drop-off or pickup only.
Right. At 52 parking spaces, is that going to be enough for 185 children?
Basically, just so you know, when we originally did this project in 2003, there really isn't any guide on the parking per se, how many parking spaces per student. And when we went through the ITE manual, which basically governs parking and traffic, we got a ratio that you need one parking space for every eight students. So we continued with that ratio now, oh God, 16 years later, and that's what it is. You don't... You have basically a rush in the morning in about a two-hour window. And then the only people parking there are the staff. So basically, half the parking lot's going to be empty at that time. And then again, in the evening, when they pick up, that's when you have the rush. So obviously, we can't design a parking lot to accommodate 108 cars. It would be overkill. So the medium is basically what we've come up with, one parking space for each teacher or staff, and then one parking space for every eight students. And the idea is that people are there to pick up and drop off, five, 10, 15 minutes max, in and out.
Okay. Does anybody else got any questions for the variance part? Mrs. Tata.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I just had a question. The variance, just to clarify, that is for Technology Drive because it looks like, and I believe it says on the variance application, it's considered that you have two front yards because you're on the corner.
Yes, we have two front yards, which are on Research Parkway on Technology. We're only moving towards Technology because that's the only way we can go. If you move... If we were to try to move towards Research, we have an existing sand filter detention area there that we designed and built in 2003, and there's also wetlands in that area. So we really can't push that way, so we're limited.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody else? Seeing that nobody else does, you want to go on to the special exception?
Okay. Basically, as part of a daycare in an IX zone, we needed a special exception. And when I called, I was asking Ms. Torres about the variance aspect of it, I double-checked to see would we need to go for a new or an updated special exception. And I believe the past practice has been to update the special exception, even though we already had one for the initial, but because we're increasing the amount of students, we have to come back and ask for an updated special exception. And it really is just for the increase in enrollment. As I said, this original daycare project was done in 2003, probably built out by the end of 2003, beginning of 2004. And they've been in existence for now about 14, 15 years. And they would like to expand. I will say that when we did come in with the original application, we did have a slightly smaller addition in the same location off the corner of the building. So it was always contemplated to come in for, at some point, an expansion. Just being so many years later, we're coming back and we're starting the process from square one and going through all the steps, so...
Then there again, the only place that proposed addition is there?
Correct.
Because of the wetlands?
That is correct. And it is in approximately... It is in the same location. It's just a bigger footprint now than was contemplated, which we have to go to wetlands and get that approval for. And we have to go to planning and zoning again for our site plan approval as well. But this was our first stop.
Okay. Is there anybody here have any questions? Mr. Szewinski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had a question for staff as far as the parking. And I know some of the rules you had mentioned were established 16 years ago. Does it seem like that is sufficient? The eight... Or one spot per eight children?
That's a fair ratio. There's no parking requirement for a daycare facility. And as Mr. Giuliano said, that's... They're just carrying forward what they were already utilizing as a methodology for parking. And you all, as part of the special exception, you were not looking for a parking variance here. We're looking strictly for a landscaping variance. But as part of the special exception, to look at such things as flow and drop-off and pickup and ample parking. So with the companion variance application, you sort of get the detail for the special exception as well, so...
Thank you. Anybody else?
Just for clarification, the original special exception that was previously approved, does that specify 85 students?
That was for 85 students, that's correct. And anytime there's an alteration in the number of students, you know, upwards or an increase in the enrollment, not only do they have, you know, their state approvals and such for the daycare, but you all need to rehear it as an increase in the special exception, a new special exception.
So even if they were to increase it only by five up to 90, they would...
That's correct. They're approved, and they have the zoning approval. The Zoning Board of Appeals gives their special exception based on that enrollment that they're licensed for.
Thanks. Anybody else? Is there anybody here to speak in favor of this application?
Evening, I'm Joe Mira, 7 Summerwood Drive. I'm talking as a citizen, not planning and zoning tonight. Based on the facts that this is... Definitely seems to be a hardship. And as far as the parking goes, any successful operation will not build a facility that is... Tenants cannot readily get readily available to... So as far as the parking goes, I don't see a problem with that at all. And as far as the location between the wetlands and the sand pit, they don't have much of a choice. So I would like to see this thing go forward. There's a need for this type of education. And they're servicing a need. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else speak in favor of the application? Anybody here to speak against the application? Do you have anything further you'd like to add?
No, thank you.
I'm going to close the public hearing and open it up for discussion and possible action by the board. Just a reminder, we're going to vote on him separately.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we approve special exception, application number 19-004.
Second. Second.
Motion to approve Application 19-004 special exception. Mr. Carmody?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfher?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes, to approve.
Ms. Tata?
Yes.
Mr. Szewinski?
Yes. Your motion for the special exception has been approved.
And Mr. Chairman, I will also make a motion that we approve Application number 19-005 for front yard landscaping of 35.4 feet where 60 feet is required.
Second.
A motion to approve the landscaping. Mr. Carmody?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfher?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Ms. Tata?
Yes.
Mr. Szewinski?
Yes. Your variance has been approved.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next application is 19-006, variance request from Davenport Associates for 45% open space to expand the building and outdoor storage area at 14 Fairfield Boulevard. Madam Secretary, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, we have staff notes. Applicants seek to reduce open space requirement from 50% to 45% in order to construct office addition of plus or minus 6,000 square feet and expand outdoor storage/parking area. Reduction in current requirements for open space in the IX zone are being evaluated as per the most recent Plan of Conservation Development, POCD, for the town. Applicant will proceed to planning and zoning following determination from ZBA on requested variance. This office would suggest that any approval include the possible condition that any outside storage area ever not to be used as storage revert to grass. And we also have a letter from Joe Mira from the Economic Development Commission dated February 8th, 2019, and a letter from Chris Hulke, engineer at Malone &amp; McBroom, dated February 19th, 2019. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Good evening. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Chris Hulke. I'm a licensed professional engineer here in the state of Connecticut, representing Davenport Associates. With me is...
Sir, can you spell your last name? It's Miler here.
Sure. It's H-U-L-K, Hulke.
Okay, thanks.
And here with me tonight is Jim Davenport, also representing Davenport Associates. So just a little bit of background about Davenport Associates and the project originally was... Davenport Associates has been in town here for about 40 years. Been a longstanding business here in town. Previously, their operations were over on Parker Street, where the Parker Place apartment development is now being constructed. Back in 2015, 2016, Davenport Associates moved their operations to the IX zone to be more in conformance with the Plan of Conservation Development of the town and also, you know, make room for that Parker Place apartment complex that is now situated next to the train station. As part of the move, Davenport Associates was able to find a location at 14 Fairfield Boulevard. This location is basically at the very end of Fairfield Boulevard in an IX zone surrounded by other industrial uses. Additionally, it's also abutted with Three Tower Drive as a separate address, basically situated between the end of two cul-de-sacs. Around it, I brought a kind of site plan aerial rendering. You can see that there's other industrial uses around it and also a water tower for water property to the north. And then to the east, there's some open farmland. As part of the zoning regulations, Table 5.1C, the schedule of lot and building requirements of the IX zone lists a minimum required open space of 50% in this industrial expansion zone. The current site plan that's been approved has 51% open space. And we're looking to have that reduced to 45% open space. As part of the need for that is the... The business itself is expanding. And the way that the site lays out and currently operates is that to the west of the building, there's a steep slope that travels down to the detention basin. So the area to expand there is very limited. And then the only area to really do any sort of expansion would be to the north. That would be the area shown in gray on the left side of the sheet. A couple of the reasons why that they need to have this expansion is due to the location and the elevation and the amount of kind of open area that's around it. There's high wind gusts. And with the having of outdoor storage, which is mainly incorporating of piping of various types and sizes, the... There's a limitation on the amount of height that you can actually store those materials at before they start to get to be a safety concern for the employees that are going to pick up and move those materials. As far as how the facility operates, basically, and Jim could talk a little bit better about this, but materials come in, they stay for a small period of time, and then they're shipped out. So currently, there's no additional room to store the materials inside the building. And the materials themselves can't be stored any higher. So we're looking to expand those horizontally to, you know, make the full use of the site and still be able to safely store the materials. So at this time, we're respectfully requesting that the Zoning Board of Appeals allow this variance to go from a minimum of 50% open space to 45% open space. So, you know, Jimmy, if you want to talk a little bit about...
Chris actually summed it up pretty good.
Can you pull the microphone closer to you, please? Thank you.
Chris actually summed it up pretty well. I moved here 43 years ago on North Plains Industrial Road. My first warehouse was 1,200 square feet. I moved to another place down the road, got 2,000 square feet, and thought that was huge. And hired my first employee. Today, we hire 50 employees, and we're looking to grow. And I think we'll be up to 70 to 80 employees within the next 10 years. This is our core facility. A lot of times, even when we were on Washington Street, if we needed more space, we rented space. But if we have to retrench, then we retrench back to our core facility. So I'll be honest with you. We had looked at Cheshire, and if it wasn't for Tim Ryan, we actually probably wouldn't be here today. But it always seems that we keep coming back to Wallingford, and we're glad we do. I enjoyed working with the town officials building the first, the warehouse that we're in now. It's a great facility. It's a neat property. Instead of a retention pond, we actually have a retention lake. It's gigantic. But it works well. So the property is terrific. The problem there is the... You wouldn't think that from Washington Street to North Plains, that if you go up to 14 Fairfield Boulevard, that the difference is unbelievable. It's like going to a different city. The wind, it's like being in Chicago. The winds just keep blowing. You can see, what is it, Mount Southington there? You know, you see right across from there, and the wind just keeps coming. So we're not able to stack the pipe as high as we did on Washington Street because we could see the pipe move. So now it's down stacked. We have to down stack it. And to move from where we're going to put the 6,000-square-foot addition to the office, we need to move a rack that's four tiers high. But you can't do that where we would have to move it. It has to be completely flat in order to do that, to make it safe for the people. So basically, that's it. We love Wallingford and like to stay here.
Well, thank you for choosing Wallingford at the beginning, and thank you for staying here. We appreciate it. So just a quick question I have is that... So that expanded in the back, that's all going to be pipe storage and...
Crates, mostly crates.
Raided pipe.
It'll be pushed up and used for some snow in the middle.
Understand.
We have to, we need a place to put snow, and right now, we can't use it as well for snow.
Okay. And the office, you got to expand the office, business is good?
Business is good, yeah. And what we think we're going to be doing, we're putting in a training center so contractors can come in and train with various heating or plumbing products, and it'll all be working. So it's going to be, going to be pretty neat. No one really does it. We're going to do it, and we think that'll bring more manufacturers our way, but our core, our core has to stay where we are. We need the outdoor storage. We don't plan on, this is probably it for us. Once we get disapproved, then we'll be done, that site will be finished. But we'll still be able to rent, which we've done in the past, up to 30,000 square feet, other places in-
Need you to pull up closer to the microphone.
Oh, sorry. Rented other, to other places in town, so we help other, you know, fellows who have properties for rent.
Very good. Thank you. Does anybody got any questions? Seeing none. Does anybody here speak in favor of the application? Mr. Ryan?
Good evening. Tim Ryan from the Economic Development Office, here tonight obviously to request your support for this application. With me tonight is Joe Mira, the Chair of the Economic Development Commission, and you have a letter from Joe in your possession, and also Jim Wolfe, who's the Vice Chair of the Economic Development Commission. I mention Jim because Jim sat on the committee that studied the Plan of Conservation and Development. So the variance tonight is for 45% open space, and the EDC several years ago, in conjunction with the town planner, have spoken in depth about the open space requirements in the IX and I-5 zones. Now, the old saying, it's land, they're not making anymore. Well, we need to take and leverage the land that we have, and we have proven through our research that 50% open space requirement is very onerous. We understand why it's 50%. When I was a young kid, that was the Barnes apple orchards, and when the town, you know, converted apple orchards to industrial space, there was this great concern that these buildings would be these, you know, behemoth buildings, and it would look ugly and industrial. So I would support 35 years ago that 50% open space was a very good plan. But it's now 35 years later, and 50% open space is onerous on property owners, and it limits our potential a great deal. So the planning and zoning, as part of the POCD, it was passed as a special project to study the open space requirements. So that has not come up on the town planner's agenda at this point, but this application obviously, you know, precedes the full study. But I will tell you that there is, there is support from the town planner's part to take and reduce to 50%. We've been talking about 35%, we've been talking about 40%, so this 45 is certainly well within the conversations that we had. But the study's not done yet, but, you know, we don't want to wait. So, you know, and then given the location of the 14 Fairfield Boulevard, you know, the neighboring properties were described, there are no neighbor issues. The Three Tower Drive, because of grade, is so far below grade that, and this 14 Fairfield is on the very end of the dead end. I would bet, you know, so many people from town go into 14 Fairfield because of the rec department, I would bet 99% of them don't even know Mr. Davenport's business is back there. So it does not make noise, it does not have any smells, no neighboring issues, none of those concerns that you have to take and consider when looking at whether this is a good, you know, expansion plan. So, you know, allowing the 45% open space supports business growth. Mr. Davenport already mentioned, 40-plus-year family business. We've managed to keep him in town, he's growing, and I will add that, both the town planner and our zoning enforcement officer, neither one opposed the application. So with that, I would ask on behalf of the Economic Development Commission and the applicant for your support tonight. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
For the record, my name is Jim Wolfe. I'm a member of the Economic Development Commission, and I had the opportunity last week to visit Davenport, and I can tell you that where they want to put the expansion, it's a natural fit. The building is like an L shape, if you will, and they're kind of filling it in. And it's a very natural fit, it's fenced in now. I don't think anybody would know the difference once they put this addition on. And I got to tell you, their operation is state-of-the-art. It was real pleasure going up there, seeing their operation. It's just a credit to the town, and we certainly support this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak in favor of the application? Anybody here to speak against the application? Do you have anything further you'd like to add?
No, just thank you for your time and your consideration. If you have any further questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing and open it up for discussion and possible action by the board.
Mr. Chairman, just a comment first, and I just want to say, I agree with Mr. Ryan. I have gone to the Parkin Merritt hundreds of times, and I never, never went to that end of the street, but I did ride by yesterday, and you keep a very nice property, it looks very nice. But yeah, I never would have known it was back there if I wasn't specifically going. I'll make a motion unless anybody else, I don't want to cut off anyone else that they have a-
No, I think you can go forward.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve application number 19-006 for 45% open space where 50% is required, and I would also add the condition in the staff notes that any outside storage area ever not to be used as storage would revert to grass.
Second.
Second. Okay, motion to approve the variance request. Mr. Carmody?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfher?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Ms. Totta?
Yes.
Mr. Zerwinski?
Yes.
Your application's been approved. Thank you for choosing Wallingford.
Yeah, thank you.
Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's it.